I mean, that's wonderful, but. So we'll see. Once I get a reply.
Are we all here? Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Palmar Eagle Area School District School Board at seven oh seven. Can we have the roll call?
Dixie Rocheski.
Here.
Michael Eddy.
Here.
Zachary Rukowski.
Here.
Doris Carson.
Here.
Jean Reese.
Here.
Carol Roy.
Here.
And Stan Williams.
Here.
We have a quorum. I'd like to read the mission statement to ensure that students excel with intellectual virtue inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual. Would you all join me for the pledge?
In public allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it. Any questions or discussion? Follows in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gave as approved. Public comment. We did not receive any via emails or anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment?
There were no sheets.
We don't have the pink sheets anymore, do we?
That's why there was one, yeah.
Yeah, we should bring those in, we can. Next time.
We just do it in person. Doris just asked.
Yep. I just asked.
So you got a comment?
Don't say it.
We're very welcoming.
I guess I would make a public comment. On behalf of the staff, I want to thank Todd and Brad for all their hard work in putting the salary schedule that they're going to present to you guys tonight. There's a lot of people that have been underpaid in this district. Not me. A lot of my colleagues have been underpaid for way too long. And I appreciate all the hard work he did into trying to fix that. And hopefully you guys strongly consider going with his recommendation. Just on behalf of the staff, I would like to thank you guys also for all the time and effort you've put in to put us in a position to do so.
Thank you, but I think we've got to mention Shelley because I know Shelley.
And Shelley, too. Oh, yeah. She did all the groundwork. Lot of groundwork.
Thank you for bringing that up. That is important. It's something we're going to be looking at later tonight and something that's been worked on since, oh goodness, at least last six months. Longing coming for this district, but very important. So thank you. Okay, board monitoring. Wrap up of winter sports from our A D, who I do not believe is here. Would that be then you, Carrie? He sent something in.
He did.
I wasn't prepared to read it. I believe there was a. It's in the packet, but I didn't know anybody was going to.
Do you want me to read it?
No, it's. I mean, it was positive.
Yeah.
Negative, but it was like, I mean, very positive.
Long story short, winter sports are over and.
Everything is awesome.
It sounded like it could if I had it.
Spring sports have begun.
And they're starting out very well.
Lot of young teachers, a lot of young coaches, but everybody rose to the occasion.
He's happy about the fields. He'd like to thank Michael Eddy.
Nope. So that's very great. Community reports. Public relations. Met on April seventh.
No.
No, that's not right.
That's not right.
It was March.
March, yeah. March ten.
Do you have a report from the last public relations? I know we're meeting next week or two weeks from now.
Just a little bit. We did. We met on March ten. Kind of the just about we discussed promoting summer school program. The postcard mailer was sent out and received by most people. We also have the promotion for the upcoming elementary open house, which I think that's the twenty eighth or coming night?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, okay, cool. And I know Todd is working on a nice piece to promote all the awesome things going on in the district. And we also made sure that our annual memberships have been renewed for things like the Chamber of Commerce and our E V A organizations. And Caitlin is supposed to be working on a P R piece to promote the establishment of the new SPACO organization for the Standard Process Complex. So that's very exciting there.
We said.
Spaco.
That's where we ended up, so.
I have designated Michael Eddy.
A lot of people like to go with it, so.
And then we did get a full page, a nice full page color coverage of some of the work that had been done at the baseball fields, done by some of our parents, Brad Patrick, who's retired, obviously, out there. And some of the baseball players were out there last Sunday preparing for their next game. And we've got a full page of color coverage in the enterprise. It was a really nice piece. So it was great to get those in there, positive coverage out there. So I have our P R, so thanks.
H R committee, Jean.
We met ahead of this so that Todd could have a chance to run past him what we talked about with the salary structure proposal. And it's looking good. He'll be presenting it. And it's moved here. We also discussed with Kevin and others, the assistant coaches and what kind of pay we're doing there and what kind of placement we want for our coaches on teams. It wasn't really resolved, but it is open for discussion and still we're looking at numbers and such. It'll be a continue, something we continue to discuss. And also was brought up with a career professional, the training that Missy was talking about, finance. And then Shelley gave us an update on benefits. It's looking good. This year, H nine thirty broker Orcs is coming up with a two percent increase, which is much better than what we've seen in the past. We're still seeing it possible to even get lower, but that's pretty promising. And then. Yeah, I already mentioned the profession about that, so that's it.
Jean, curriculum policy.
Yep, we met last week. We discussed the continued progress of the science committee regarding the science curriculum. Jody and Abin have been working on pulling together samplings and they're beginning to look at those. They're meeting again next week.
Yes.
And they anticipate pilot curriculum by the fall. So they're just going to keep working on it. Regarding Abbott, Abbott, sorry, they had met with the regional rep, Carrie, Jody and Todd, discussed the next steps. And those next steps are coming to the board tonight. Summer professional development. So this has been on our agenda a couple times. We just kind of actually got to see the numbers this time around. And so we went ahead and moved it to H R to talk about a piece, moved it to finance to just re-review the numbers. And it's also on the board for tonight for vote. And we did discuss Ed Camp. And so that was two sessions that have already happened in March. Those went really well. And they have another session Monday, so. But that, I don't know if I can call a program, but that program's going to move really well, so there you go.
Thank you. Buildings and grounds.
Building grounds met a little while earlier. As we went through, we're waiting on some good weather to take care of the Eagle Elementary roof. The cameras in Eagle Elementary were being replaced today from P E S. High school, middle school roof repair. Some internal works are being completed. We're waiting for weather and people to do the outside work, but there's significant progress there. Hopefully we get it off our agenda next month. Bathroom codes for viewing discussion. We're going to bring it back to the board for vote next month. Garden hall pit update. Donations from the P T O. Great update, Katie. Thank you. Talking about some fundraising and really that's going to be an enhanced administration and so building the grounds. We'd like to hear an update when it comes around, but that ship sailed for us, so that's good. It sounds like a very positive thing that's happening. G I N G was cleaning the gyms. The awareness has been made. I think that's just going to be left in the administrative hands. They can manage that, so that'll come off our agenda. Update on the Standard Process Complex shot put area. So long and short of it is, is it's been approved to get repaired. Might just need a date as to when it's going to be done, so. Possible new custodian update. So we have three applicants, one interview, no follow up. So complex field readiness for spring sports. Well, spring sports has already started. If you've been out there, the fields, everything looks great. We will have to look at the bathrooms at the concession stand out there, but a lot of hard work has been put in to making sure that that gift looks great. There was a question regarding parking buses and a possible R F P for new transportation. There was an answer about liability. There's always liability, so I think this question's got answered regarding that. Like to see what their thoughts were as to where they would park those. And then lastly, a much heated discussion regarding a community weight room discussion, which kind of translated into maybe more than just the weight room. I think more of a health and wellness or some other aspect to that. We kind of left the individual Quentin with maybe starting a committee to clean some support, local support, to get that thing a little farther down the road. That's all I had.
Thank you. Michael, finance committee, Metzey.
We met and finished just a little while ago. But there was one question regarding vouchers and I believe we're going to do some follow up on that. It was her private school transportation contract and seemed a little bit off. So that's going to be reviewed. We looked, budget variances will be addressed within four to six weeks. Brad is meeting with C S A five to work on that. Our advisor contract update and club stipends update. Shelley did give us a very nice thorough spreadsheet to look at. I did forward to Michael and Zach the codes that apply to that, so we're going to review that next month in more detail. Transportation, the busing that was discussed in buildings and grounds and keeping buses on our school property. We are looking at bidding out transportation, which it's just a discussion that we're having with Blaine and with other transportation companies to see what's going to happen in just where the future lies for transporting our students. On Monday, I report, I reported that I met with Brad on Monday and we discussed the capital expenditures calendar. And it's in a good place, so we're going to remove that from our ongoing agenda unless we have to put it back. The same with the budget calendar. He believes that's in a good place and we don't need to follow up on it. We did discuss as well the summer professional development plan and we have a recommendation for our full board as well as Abbott. We have a recommendation for that. Summer school, we discussed it was on the agenda this month for the first time. And we, based on recommendation of our administrative staff, we will table that until we have our actual enrollment numbers. And we do need some further clarification about students who reside outside of our district coming to summer school. And we agreed that it should, that we should have our approved annual budget for the annual meeting posted on our website so that we can share all the good news that has been occurring financially in our district without the help of S R funds. So that was the entirety of the finance committee.
Great, thank you, Metzey. Are there any administrative reports?
Yes.
You go.
All right. So looking at my three, we're responding to three positive groups, so we are almost at the end of forward testing. We sat down today for a second meeting with Generac. Generac is going to be very generously supporting a Lego robotics program at E P S to grow it. One of the lacking areas is training, and so they reached out to us and said, what do you need? We've been doing some research on what teacher training would look like through Lego and we're looking at getting three people through to the tune of eighteen hundred dollars. So today we'd like to talk about what those ballpark figures were. Next week they're expecting a written proposal for what kinds of funding we're looking for for training. And then what kind of funding we're looking for for a fall twenty twenty two launch year to increase our Lego robotics. Then if approved, then we'll bring it to board as an accepted grant or donation, but they're very eager to support our Lego robotics and grow that program. We're very happy to do everything with them. So that conversation went very well today. And I do have to give a shout out to Joel and to Chiki Livlum for helping with some of that research to find out more context on Lego because we do have some items, but I don't feel the depth of staff has trained properly to use it to its whole potential. So this helps bridge a gap using Generac community funds in a place where they want to spend that money. So it really is a nice, nice stepping point for where we need to be. We're already currently at eighteen students enrolled for fall for four K already. That's almost a full section. And I have to give a shout out to Kaylee, who put us in connection with the heat bridge head start program through some special education work that she was doing. And we are able to hand out our information there to lots of parents who are interested in transitioning from head start next year to our four K program. So it's going to be a really nice intentional theater within our district and just let's parents know of some of those resources they may not be aware of. Maybe having that head start lens, this will help shift to the four K lens. And then lastly, to end on more money and fun notes, I'd like to read something that Scott Hein is sharing. And so it is in the packet later underneath a donation and grant. But Scott says that we were just approved for a seven thousand dollar grant from the Gloria and Art King Foundation. The money will be used to purchase instrument for next year's fifth grade band students, which the students will be able to then use. They will be owned by P K S D for free. Committee request that these instruments do not have any fees attached for them. We're going to honor that request and be able to give every student that wishes to participate in band, the ability to do so at no cost to that family. So Scott worked very, very hard. And so on Monday for our P D day, I am inviting the board who was available and would like to come at eleven A M for a photo opportunity to accept that check and then pose for a picture that Kate will be taking. So it's Monday at eleven A M. If you are able to join us for that opportunity.
That's this Monday, the eighteen?
Yep. It's going to be at E E S in the gym. So we're going to have staff pose. We're going to pull some students in. The foundation will be there. Scott will be there to accept and thank. And then we're going to have kiddos write thank you notes for the foundation as well. This will fully fund most of the instruments that are typically played by fifth graders at no cost to students. And then also working in some intentional saving of money for repairs, so knowing that instruments do break down. So this is very, very exciting.
You know, that actually is very, very exciting. After, when we first talked about it, after curriculum policy, we were, Zach was saying that he played his grandmother's clarinet.
Yep.
I mean, we've all gone through that, where you have, you're trying as a family to find instruments and.
And instruments are not cheap.
It's so, no, and it's.
Especially when you're purchasing and you like.
Yeah, if they can't find or they don't have it in their family, this is just going to open up that field for so many kids.
Yeah, I think that's like. Scott deserves a hundred percent for that. He worked very, very hard to give the, to give.
That's fantastic. Really, really wonderful. Thank you.
Well, to go off of grants, we also got awarded the kids, get kids ahead initiative grant, which is another mental health, mental health grant to give support to kids. It's a little bit over twenty two thousand dollars up yet, so we're going to try to get some motivational speakers and some guest speakers in for some kids next year and get some additional curriculum in the elementary school of it, so. Another grant opportunity.
I don't have any money.
We only collect the money.
I know. Unlike Katie, I am happy to be almost done with forward testing, but then we will roll right into ninth and test grade A C T spider testing. The third and final round of middle and high school state testing, which we all enjoy so much. So we'll be doing that, the last, I think the last week of April is our planning there. So information has been shared with teachers. It will go to families. I don't know, I decided before or after Easter. Do you want to know about it before or after? Probably after because it'll stay fresh in people's minds when the dates are. So Jody has helped with schedule. Teachers have been grading and prepping and providing good testing environments for kids and prepping and all of that. It's a lot. My seventh grader and eighth grader will have tested five, five days in three weeks for about three, two and a half hours each day, so two hours each day. It's a lot testing. It's a lot for the kids.
Here, you do have one. Matt?
I have, oh, Maddie, yes. I'll talk to Maddie. Yes. Well, not to go there. And as you probably saw, Maddie Natchey was awarded a Cole Excellence Foundation scholarship in the amount of ten thousand dollars. I don't know if Metzey remembers, Mason didn't get nearly ten thousand dollars, five, which was a huge increase.
It was promised one.
Yes.
And we were there and her call.
Amount, but Herb has continued to just significantly increase the amount. So this year I did the math. We gave away almost two point five million dollars. Since the foundation began, we've given away almost thirty million dollars. So education obviously is near and dear to Herb and Maddie will get recognized as senior board. Like unfortunately, you don't get to do the lunch anymore and we'll get your picture taken with Herb, which you used to do, but none of that happens, but yeah, so very proud of Maddie. Alex Huff was a finalist. They now do that as well. So it used to be you could only nominate a certain number of kids based on the size of your school. So we, up until a few years ago, could only ever nominate one child. So we had to pick who we wanted to do the application. Now they decided that's not fair, which it really probably is not. And any child is allowed to apply, so the number of applicants have also significantly increased over the years, so that's nice. Thanks for your reminder about Maddie and her ten thousand dollars. Job fair, hopefully you all saw that. We are hosting job fair. This really was spearheaded by Kyle Dammel and the chamber dinner that I went to. I sat with Heidi Doister and Angela from Standard Process and the, I'm not going to remember the name, the Palmar Beautification Project. Yes, wait, I sat with all of them. And the chamber is looking for employment pretty desperately, so this is not a career fair. It is a job fair. Really marketed to try and connect businesses who are hiring with potential employers, whether that are, starting with potential employees, whether that be seasonal work, whether that be part time work, whether that be postgraduate work. As of earlier today, we had twenty four businesses and military. We did allow the military and thinking postgraduate. They are related genes for an audience with kids as well. I think there were twenty four on the list. We're technically supposed to close Friday. I will do another reminder. Really, I just wanted to know if I'd have enough, so we'll continue to take people. We're holding that the last Friday in April. I think I said I would open the gym about nine, so I think nine thirty to noon is kind of the target for kids to be able to walk through and all that. So if you're around and want to come look at job fair, you're welcome to do that. I thought I had one other thing, but no.
You said Friday, but you meant Saturday, right?
No, it's Friday.
Oh, it's Friday.
It's Friday, the last Friday in April. Friday, April twenty ninth. Anybody got a calendar up?
Is it during, what if it was?
It is twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth, whatever.
Nine thirty, it will be open to the quote unquote children, nine thirty to noon.
How many kids do you have coming through?
So I'm going to go through with all the sophomores in a time block, have it open, then go through with all the juniors, seniors in a time block, and then have it open again during lunch. So all tenth through twelfth grade kids will go through the gym for the fair.
Because it's a lot of company stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it'll be about a hundred and twenty kids, they'll see.
Yeah, I love that. Do they, are you, do they ask for resumes or how do they?
You know, I just told the businesses to come with whatever they want. I mean, it's, it's Generac to the Eagle Side Hotel, to White Barn Walmart. I mean, it's, it's all kinds of people. So I, we are going to tell the kids to plan to bring their driver's licenses and be prepared to fill out, you know, applications onsite. But for the most part, just trying to connect them, whether they give them materials, set up onsite interviews, however they want to do it, the companies really can do whatever they want.
I tell the older kids to have resumes.
Yeah, and I can do that, too. They can, they create them, all of our juniors and I'll have them, so we can definitely do that as well. I haven't really shared much with the kids yet because I was trying to see what I would have for our business list before I shared it.
Make it like the real deal. I, yeah, prepare it or make it.
I told Brad we should have a booth because we need lawn care people, but you know, he didn't sound like he was going to.
Yeah, I think it's.
So anybody wants to come and take applications for us, because we need lawn care people. Only other thing is, and I don't even know if most of you realize this going on, Anne Pop and I are working on a civil rights compliance D P I audit, for lack of a better term. So Anne, I, Kaylee, kind of whoever I can get to help me out, is working on this compliance audit, which is about eighty five different artifacts we need to upload. So Caitlin's going to be part of it. So it really has to do with just verifying that facilities, programs, all of that is equal access for every group you can think of. P L, disabilities, gender, race, all of that, economically disadvantaged, so just a big thanks to Anne. Yes, non discriminatory. Big thanks to Anne because she's been really helping me a lot with it, so. And that has to be done by the end of month? That's all I got. Great. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Follows in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just once again, listen in here. The gifts and donations that we receive are fantastic. Fundraisers, we're, those are promoted on the web and everything, and I just want to just make sure everybody knows, and they do, to try and take advantage of them whenever they can to just help all these groups that help our kids. Action items. We have a motion for action item A.
I make a motion to consider approval of the second reading of policy two two six six, non discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities.
Any questions or discussion? Follows in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Action item B, teachers on call.
Consider motion to approve the contract renewal with teachers on call.
Your second?
I'll second.
Questions or discussion?
I will abstain from voting.
I was going to ask you if you would.
So teachers on call, is that the only service or are they quoted or is it just, you know, a traditional group that we've been using?
It's, I, I think the one out there right now is viable. I mean, there was, there was one called Golden Apple, but they didn't survive long. So right now, it's either you find your own software. I think all the districts I know of are on there that are not using their own, they're all using.
They added two percent increase, that was all I saw.
I just don't know enough to know if there were other groups or how are we quoting this, how is pricing?
I, I don't know. I didn't even know who else that would go through this whole. The ones that, like I said, the one that was out there was a little too expensive and it just had attraction. I don't think they're on anymore.
We used to contract out our own, we had had an in-house person who would call every morning and get stuff, so this seems much more efficient and effective. So I don't think we want to go back to that, but.
No, I'm not, yeah, I wasn't questioning.
No, I know, but yes, if there's other organizations, if there's a couple of different, so it's good question. Follows in favor of accepting the contract renewal with teachers on call, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. C, consider a motion to approve student device lease request. Assuming that's why Ryan, do you have anything that?
I'll make a motion to approve the student device lease request.
I'll second.
Now, now you can ask Ryan.
Now, we can call Ryan up.
I do have something to mention, so overall, I thought this was going to be a win to present for me tonight because the overall cost of the hardware has dropped. So if you notice one of the graphs, we split.
So if you notice one of the graphs, um, we split these up in four-year lease increments. And because the cost of the device has dropped a little bit, we roughly say $6,000, um, per, per year on our payment. I thought that was pretty good until April 1st rolled around the derbouts and the FCC released TCF Wave 3, which is awesome because they'll provide reimbursement that we qualify for up to $400 per device. And it's, the per unit cost is 425, so that's $226,000 that we would just get. I didn't want to rain on the parade.
But you do have money.
But that's still. Anyway, um, there's a catch here. So obviously I'd like to, to get these units ordered like yesterday because of the supply chain issues. We cannot order them until July 1st. But if that's the biggest hurdle to get $226,000, I, I think I'll have to pay for that. So I guess I just wanted to help on that as a highlight.
Any questions for Ryan or for any discussion?
Can you do that every month?
My next item costs you money, so.
Has new Chromebooks for the fall for all the students to take.
Yeah, in an ideal world, we'd get all of these in the summer, get them in boxes, you know, pay them instead. Um, and you have them already to go for the beginning of school, so maybe it would be a Christmas.
No, here it is. When, no, that was, we just had the server purchase. We did get.
Yeah, it's the student device lease request.
In the, in one, which one? Oh, there, student device lease.
Yes.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And you're in. Um, D.
I make a motion to approve the server purchase.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So my only question to Brad over this one was, was it in budget? And he said yes, so that's all he needed to hear, so I'm good to go. Came in for 100, got rid of it roughly, 100.
You didn't get any free money for that?
What a disappointment right now.
I did appreciate, I did appreciate how it was presented to us. I, uh, it, it was very well done. Thank you.
Always have to answer questions.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E, motion to approve the Ford Healthcare School Nursing Contractual Agreement.
I move to approve the 20, 22, 23 Ford Healthcare School Nursing Contractual Agreement.
Your second?
I'll second. So can I ask, why did it go from a thousand? So I remember, I remember two years ago when we sat down with Mr. Port Hasi and we had this conversation and we cut it down, the hours, and it was down to 800. So it's been riding at 800 now, our contract is up. Why now is it a thousand hours when prior to that it was like nine?
Well, we're not gonna make 800 this year, more than likely.
But now you have another one, a thousand hours next year.
Yeah, and.
It's be, uh, having met with Brad, I asked him about that. They have gone from four days to five days. So the nurse will be in every single school for the five days. It's not a full time, but.
Right now we have a day of work, a day a week with no nurse coverage in the district at all.
So this will be an improvement for our students and our buildings. So you're recommending it.
Yeah, so it can't be a full day. How many hours does she work?
No, it's like a five. I think it's a five hour thing.
Nine, she works four or something, nine or something.
She works four or five hour days right now. She would be working five, five hour days.
So I mean, there's still a significant amount of time that there's not a nurse in building.
It would be about 50% of that. Cause a thousand hours is half a year work rate, so. Five, six hours.
And that's one nurse that's split between the two buildings, etc.
We, we would talk about how that would work. I'm, I'm not a big fan of anyone having this one time and just, even though we're not very far apart, there's always so much lost travel time. So we would either work on a schedule like we, we do with Joel where, you know, he doesn't rotate or maybe one week he's, she's illegal, one week she's here. Or honestly, where, where the need is, you know, depending on, there'll be more high needs kids in this building. Um, some of the staffs contain special ed and things like that. But there's more nursing needs, people want in Katie's building with the small kids and, and things like that. Um, you know, she has taken over a lot of our training for our medical response teams, our kits, all of our immunization stuff. Um, she gets done, you know, there's a lot of that that occurs. She's on a lot of health plans, on IP, on, does she have anything to do with healthcare stuff? No, no, no. Um, I just think that, that one day a week, and, and Ford Healthcare will never, they won't bill us for more than they use. So if we get into it and decide we don't want it or we don't need it, or we don't, she doesn't have work to do. I mean, they, they are very flexible and revisiting it. But I don't think, and Todd and Brad were made aware of this a couple of months ago, we will not make this year on 800. I think we have a plan to revisit in May and probably bring an additional contract to you, um, as far as trying to finish out the year. Cause we're not, we're gonna run out of hours with that.
It actually has a thousand hours that does cover. Students are only in school about 1400 hours. So that a thousand hours that does cover a fair amount.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F, we have a motion to approve the proposal for the teacher salaries. Um, that has been worked on for a long time and everybody has that in their packet. Has been talked about in HR.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for teacher salaries for the 21-year student contract here.
I'll second.
How about y'all second?
Any discussion or questions?
I just have one. Todd, did you get a chance to put any time into, um, I mean, the way it is, it's workable. Can you still look at it to see if it's possible to accelerate the payoff?
Yeah, that would, that's good independence, we get closer at the end of the year to see what it's at.
All right.
But it, it, it's not, certainly not until that contract happened. If it's like last year where we're, we're phasing a surplus in my case, that's just to get it done.
Get it done.
Um, did, did everyone understand the formula, the concept? But I didn't know. But nobody's gonna be able to actually put that right in. You understand.
I thought it was very, I thought it was very.
So, so the minimum increase is good for, for anyone is good to 3%. Yet if you are, if you have been frozen and aren't on the proper cell, um, then you could, one third of that would then be added to the salary. But if there's some, some way we can speed that up, maybe make a two-year thing, we'll, we'll know closer to the end of this year. So the, again, the average came out to be 4.46, um, which I, the significance of that might be that, uh, we're seeing a lot of districts giving the, the maximum CPI of 4.7. So we're not too far off that, which I think is something to, to maybe celebrate. But, uh, and then the other constraint was trying to find a total increase that matched what we had done prior year. So I, I, I felt confident we'd be able to maintain that over a couple of years.
And this increase was already included in your budget for salaries for this year?
I, I believe so. I, I, it might, there might be a, uh, might be over a little bit, but nothing significant, um, that we can't cover. And again, we do have a fair amount of resources available to us for that, that kind of purpose actually.
And we are also looking at our par professionals.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring that in May. Um, we wanted to redo some of the, uh, the comparables because we were getting some information about higher numbers that we had, that we had earlier in the year. Uh, partly, you know, for, for some like special ed aides who have to be licensed, foresee, um, a demand for those people. So we thought, well, let's, I want to get through this, um.
It was.
Yeah, going through this, I just wanted to get through this and then, because I think with the other folks, um, there's probably just a few that need adjustment and then we can just, uh, uh, split a base increase across the board.
Thank you.
And it, I think it's accomplishing, um, appreciating our staff that we have and making sure that they know that we're working to do this, which is long overdue. And thank you for all your work on this. Um, working towards one of our goals, which is teacher retention, which is only gonna help our student achievement. Um, and then also attracting teachers when we do have openings. We wanna be able to say, you know, come to this district, we're paying as much as other, when we lose teachers, other district that pay higher. We're finally getting ourselves in the ballgame and I think it's fantastic and we all appreciate it. And I think it's great that we can do it.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. G.
The next question on that is, when will they get the, the retro pay? And then when, and I believe Shelley said the second payroll in April. Is that?
Um, now a motion G, which would be to, um, approve our superintendent contract.
Motion to approve the proposal superintendent contract.
2021 fiscal year. Yeah, it's long overdue.
Very second.
I'll second. It's just something that Todd had asked us for a minor change to it. And with minor change, it's very reasonable or like we have to Todd and appreciate your service, so.
Can we change that to 2021 to 2026?
Uh, you can't, no.
2028.
I don't want to get in the fight with WR. That's a lot of pride that's. When for next year? But I, you know, I, I talked to the attorney. I, I mentioned I didn't have to, well, you need to have that if something comes up. If you have to sign off on a grant proposal or something comes along, um, someone could argue, well, you're not. So they said just, just for the sake of, uh, issues that could come to the district, I need to do that. Technically, I was operating under the, the particular statute contract, but she recommended just, just get it signed. Worry about the next year after that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome aboard.
I, I, I don't know if the, if the freight train is going through.
That's ready to take you away.
Okay, H, consider a motion to approve the students A and B for early graduation. Do we have to split them and do them one at a time?
I think.
I, I don't know that.
That's what we did.
I make a motion to consider approval of students A and B for early graduation.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'd be the, I think it's great that Carrie's working really hard with one of the students that needs some help to get through it.
But, um, aren't they required to have 25 credits and this is only?
25 is graduate. No, this is their current.
Their current, okay.
Yeah. So there's a minimum threshold they have to have at this point.
We approve it and then if they don't make that threshold, it doesn't go.
And if they don't want to go, they don't go. We don't chub them off the door. So I decided we meet, uh, Christine and I would meet, um, um, November, Octoberish with the kid and the parent and just see what they are planning to do. And at that point, if they don't want to graduate, they don't graduate and they do what they do.
Any other questions for Carrie or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action item aye for summer professional development.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the summer professional development budget for the summer of 2022. I'll second.
Any discussion?
My mind was going to recommend a cap of $25,000. So if we could amend that.
I'll, I'll amend my motion to include a cap of $25,000 for the summer professional development without Abbott. Right. I'll second. I just think this is great. Our teachers love to learn and this is helping, you know, build and shape them. And hopefully our investment in them will, you know, kind of punch home that we really value them and what they do for us. And I'm very excited about that.
Long overdue. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. J, consider a motion to approve Abbott programming.
I'll make a motion to consider approving Abbott program. I'll second.
Any discussion?
Finance has a recommendation of capping the expenditures at $18,000. So if we could amend the motion to include that.
I'll amend the, a motion to put a cap of $18,000 on the Abbott program. I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. District Ministeraboo's report.
Um, the big news, I guess not the big news, but, um, I, I did put together a letter, um, that kind of talked about where we were, where we are two years later, um, after the, it was about two years ago that the, that the dissolution, um, process took place. Um, and I just kind of outlined some of the, some of the very positives in terms of finance. Did, did talk about a few things that, you know, might be upcoming. I do want to follow that up with a second one because I think if you look at the number of, of courses we've added at the secondary level and some of the things that we've done, which, which made it too long. I mean, the, the original letter I had, some of you may have seen it, it was like two and a half pages. And, and you're right, they're gonna get, come up with their paragraph in game order. So what I'd like to do though is do a second one in the near future, kind of talking about the new, the new course of planning and the new course that we've had in the last two years. Because I think that says a lot about a district, I mean, this is the district that's just kind of rolling over and barely making it. And we're, we're, we're doing very well. And then I did also, um, looking at, at, you know, our report card scores have been very, very good. Um, and I think that, that talks about our teaching staff in the district as well. So, uh, those will be forthcoming and I think Caitlin sent the one letter to the newspaper. And then I'm not sure who, whether it's Caitlin or crazy, is gonna do the electronic period of the letter.
I gotta start to go Friday morning or Monday.
Do you have it?
Yeah.
In any of that, so we'll, we'll send that out, um, as, as well in case someone doesn't read the paper. You know, other papers, so they can kind of see what's going on in terms of where we are financially. I, I really would like to, um, add the issue that you were predicting about the COVID disli- dissolution. That, that just won't happen. The, the financial position we're in is just, is, is strong. Moody's, the grades we got on our, on our financial review by Moody's Investment Services were fantastic. The only issue was, you know, the, the enrollment. And we see that's starting to turn around as well. So I think in another year or two, if we went out to Moody's, I think we'll see another big jump, uh, investment grade, uh, investment grade bond rate. So. A lot of good news, we're, so let people know. Um, and we are not striving on COVID. Like I said, we still have some COVID one funds left. COVID two, we will use some of that. I mean, the legislature intended us to use that for our operating budget. I mean, that's why they, they kind of gave us zero, for two years, 0% increase on the revenue control because they said use your COVID money for operations. So we may just use some of that for operations and taking care of teacher retention, some of those kinds of things, you know, the next two years.
Can you also send it to, um, who was the guy, Jake from the State Parks? Who sent you from State Parks? Maybe we're in a separate. Jake from, from the, from the Fremont, he's the one that sent to all of us that used to.
Also, send one, two, send it to Dan.
Send it, yeah, send one to send it to.
One, two.
Moody or.
I, I wrote this code.
Motion still sent it.
Still sending it. I am, I'm sure our community email letters list gets one to me. But, uh, yeah. And the other girl from, was it UW Milwaukee that asked, where were you wearing whatever?
Yeah.
She reached out. Actually, she did the most reporting, other than Jake from State Park.
Well, and as a part of our staff.
What are you wearing?
We talked about that a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's important too. That's our frontline. And it, this was all put together because of rumors. I mean, we're all hearing it and we know it and we're seeing it. And rumors are still out there like, oh, you're resolved when your COVID money's gone. And it's just so annoying to continually hear. So I think the more people can get it out there too. And yes, our staff are the ones that talk to our parents and our kids and everything. And let's get everybody on the same page with actual truthful information, so. Great, thank you. Um, Brad is not here. He did meet with our treasurer, Mitzi, earlier, so that was good. So she was quite well informed. Announcement and board comments.
I have to go.
We all look at Tara and Ryan.
I know.
That's nice.
I love saying, like, today's, today's Jefferson Day on the Union. We finally got coverage in the Daily Union, which is a rarity. Our track team has been killing it. And they went to Whitewater and they have nine athletes that qualified to compete at the indoor state track championships. And our boys relay team, our 4x400 boys relay came home with the D3 state championship title. Making some history for the district. Awesome. And not only did they totally crush the D3 competition, but their time was fast enough that they also beat D2 and D1 teams along the way too. I mean, those kids showed that they belong, small school or not, and they competed against schools five, 10 times their size. So the track team, the shout out to everybody that follows the track right now. They have almost tripled the athletes competing in there and these kids are going out. They competed in the snow on Friday and the girls and the boys just crushed it on a big horn. So they, and the middle school had their opening meet last night. We hosted it here. It was great to see, we had seven, seven schools come here. And the middle school athletes were excited and it was great to see our champion track team out there breaking and helping and volunteering and helping make sure that our middle school meet was run. So shout out to all of those athletes. They're really representing our small district in a big way. And our boys baseball team, our young team started out the season 3-0. They had doubleheader. They swept Fall River, which is a huge conference rival. And shout out, those three games were made possible to be held here because of all of the hard work and efforts of our volunteers. Brad Patrick especially, who I think lives out at the baseball field. And even some of our players and their parents are out there on the weekends, making sure those fields look beautiful. So I just, it's been phenomenal. So proud of all of our, our programs. And golf too kicked off the season. And we had our senior Daniel Reiner medal and got in the top five in the very first meet of the season. So that was a great way for golf to start. And our girls softball also swept Fall River over the weekend. They were on the road. I almost forgot about them, but they won the group victory, so. Spring sports is off to a really good start.
Do we have any, um, any upcoming band or choral music concerts?
We'll, we'll. I need to point to Snipe. You couldn't hear them singing?
Oh, here's one right here.
They were, they were singing. Oh, I remember, I was going to say, I was going to thank Kevin Britton, taking them, we've been doing a lot of field trips and that made me think of Scott. He's taking kids, middle school kids to Mamma Mamma Symphony tomorrow. March band concert has already occurred. What?
Thursday.
Thursday. Not Thursday, March? It'll be May before Scott has his awards concert and then I think.
No, it probably goes again in May as well. I don't know when you're going to hear that.
Our band concert is going to be Thursday, May 12th, from 6 to 7 for fifth grade for their performance. And then our drama production will be the night before on the 11th from 6 to 7 in our gym as well, so. So what are you doing for drama? Um, they're doing a show called The Granny Awards, which is like the fairy tales plus the Oscars together. And they accepted different awards for different parts and they've been fairy tale. So they're really excited working on it. So that'll be May 11th and then May 12th will be the, the great band concert.
Anything else?
Uh, congratulations on your election.
Good Michael, congratulations.
This is the first time, well, we're not technically, we're not technically seated yet. You've been elected, but this is the first time since 2019 that all the members of the board are actually elected, so.
Who had the most votes?
I did because have you seen the bumper sticker on my car that said Jean pointed out?
I was canvassing going, I just crushed ours. She did call me though and say, you know, I concede that you've got more votes, but I'm still president.
We can't, and actually, that's what I wanted to ask, is the re-organizing.
Just put it in May. Put it in May.
If it falls in the, yeah, in the.
Tracy has.
They were going to look into that.
Tracy knows about it.
I'm worried after the last.
It's within 30 days of the 4th Monday in April. There you go. We had much discussion about that last. I watched the wasp be. So Tracy will send it for us, Kate will pass.
Okay, so we got that. Can we have a, oh, the meetings are listed in your agendas, the next committee meetings. Can we have a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Motion to adjourn to closed session.
There's a second?
Second.
We need a roll call vote for that.
Mr. Orchowski, yes, Michael, I. Patrick Rosowski, yes, Avery. Tara Roy, yes, Christiane, yes. Who's second? I did.
All those in favor say aye? Oh, we, actually, no. Okay, we have now a closed session. Thank you all for coming. Now you have to leave.
Michael, can you sign it? Honey, boy, thank you too, Ryan.
Can I say something exciting?
Do you hear me tell once, say thank you?
Can I say something exciting for the hack? So this fundraiser, it's signed, darn it. I'm so excited. Kathy Bass, that's her dad, who's a virgin.
I want them to go on Joseph's next one. I'm ready to ask. I want them to go down and take one.
I.